Good evening. At this time, I'd like to welcome Paul Tandy, Chief Communications and Emergency Management Officer, to the podium for the recognition of the Citizens for the Parkway Community.
There we go. There we go. Good evening, President Todd, members of the Board, and Dr. Marty, and Ms. Stover. So I have the pleasure tonight to introduce to you the Dream Team of the Proposition S Volunteer Committee, who worked so hard in support of the Proposition S bond issue on November the 6th. These are the people who say yes to virtually everything. They work extremely hard. We had a wonderful committee of dedicated volunteers. We're fortunate that we have several folks who've done this sort of thing before, and they serve as mentors for the new folks, and then we have new people stepping up to help on these campaigns. And it's amazing what they do in a relatively short amount of time. I mean, really, just a few months' time. What they do in this role is amazing. For example, a few little points. In order to do a campaign of this size in a community the size of Parkway, you have to raise money, because you have to do mailings, and you have to do yard signs, and door hangers, and things like that. They raised over $30,000 in just a few months, and that's a fantastic feat, and also a testament to our community that supports the effort. Printed more than 2,000 yard signs, 30,000 brochures, and other more than 30,000 door hangers. They did a month-long, door-to-door campaign that many of you were involved in orchestrating and arranging all that work, and the app that they got to do that work was just a tremendous amount of time and energy on this team. I can't say enough about the work that they did. They were extremely successful, as you know. More than 50,000 people, 50,728, to be exact, voted yes in favor of Proposition S, which was about a 74% yes vote, which is the highest yes turnout we've had in 20 years. And as you know, we do bond issues about every four to five years, so that's fairly historic for us, and it's a testament to their work. It's a testament to the work, really, that our teachers and people in the schools do every day, to build the support and trust in our community. We're very fortunate in Parkway that we do have such a supportive, wonderful community. So with that, I would like to introduce, not everyone could be here tonight, the committee goes all the way down to volunteers in the individual schools, so there were so many people involved in this campaign, but I'm pleased that some of our leadership could be here tonight. I'd like to introduce them, and so we can recognize them and their work. I'll begin with the two leaders of the Dream Team, and these were the ones that put the whole program together, and were the glue of the entire effort. And first, I'll introduce Charlotte Delfonzo. Charlotte? And our other co-chair of the Dream Team is a familiar face to you all, and that is Mr. Bruce Major, who used to be on the school board.
And Paul neglected to mention the communications staff at Parkway, which is absolutely integral every day of every year to these successful bond campaigns.
Thanks, Bruce. The next person I'm going to introduce has served, this is at least the second campaign in a leadership role at the district level, and this is the person who was in charge of keeping track of all the money, and the receipts, and making out the payments to all the obligations that the committee had. He also had the wonderful opportunity to have his name plastered on all the yard signs and on all the materials. In fact, he said, "You know, can you print my name just a little smaller this time?" But anyway, that's Mr. Michael Birds. Michael? And serving as the secretary on the committee, this is the person who had the task of sitting in on all the meetings, and then trying to decipher what all was said, and the decisions that were made, and the tasks that were doled out, and then she tried to communicate that with the entire committee, most of whom weren't necessarily at the meeting. And she did a phenomenal job, and that's Pam Hill. The next person I'm going to introduce, this is a new position that the committee added this year, and I can't think of many, probably, school bond committees that are so organized and robust that they have an ethics officer. And this position is the one who made sure that all the materials were in line with all the regulations and so forth. They were worded carefully and appropriately. We had the proper language on all the materials, and did a fantastic job, and that is John Kilper. You may recognize John. John's been very involved in our Parkway Alumni Association. He's the former president of our Parkway Alumni Association. We were also just so fortunate on this campaign to have a volunteer who, she's in our early child, has children in our early childhood program, but she's a fantastic communications professional, and she agreed to chair the communications committee, which is such a key, integral committee, because they're putting together all the materials, writing all the copy, making sure all the deadlines are met with the printers and the vendors and so forth. And it is a very, very difficult, time-sensitive job, because the campaign is so time-sensitive. And she just met all those marks and just did it, like, it just made it look easy, but we told her, "We know it's not." And that's Karen McBride. Karen? And next, we're pleased to have a couple of our area coordinators here tonight. These next two people had the dubious job of corralling all of the school volunteers in each of the buildings, and making sure everyone knew what they were doing, and the left hand knew what the right hand was doing, and dotting i's and crossing t's. And it's a really tough job, because at the school level, it gets a little hairy when you're dealing with that volume of volunteers, and all the work that has to be done at the school level in terms of the walk days, on the weekends, getting volunteers for that, also getting pole workers, and those types of tasks are very, very difficult, and we appreciate the people that step up to do that. And we have two of those here tonight, from the central area. Our coordinator is Steve Shane. Steve? And our south-area coordinator is Kristi Schindler. Kristi. And yes, Kristi is a familiar face. You might know someone that she knows on the board. So once again, I mean, I'll call them the Dream Team, because under the numbers, we just phenomenal campaign, these things are so time-consuming, and these are people, I guarantee you, who are immensely busy outside of this sort of work. So for them to step up and do this, a job that is, in some cases, kind of thankless, we're so pleased to be able tonight to formally recognize and thank them one more time for all the work they do on behalf of our students of our district. Thank you.
Thank you again for joining us tonight. We will continue. 6.01, Addendum to Agenda Item 10.09, Approval of Personnel Items. 6.02, Addition of Agenda Item 10.36, Acceptance of Gifts from the Public, Claymont PTO. 7.0, Citizen Statements. I have a list of everyone who's signed up. There are 11 of you, so we will allocate 1 minute 30 seconds for each of you. I understand there's two coming together, so we'll have you abide by that same minute and 30 seconds, and the mic will be cut off as soon as that time is reached, so don't take offense. It's just the way it is. We'll try and get everybody through as quickly as possible, so we'll start with Kathy Che.
How do you start the time?
It'll start when you start. Whenever you're ready.
Hi. My name's Kathy Che, and my son, who's dyslexic, attended Carmen Trails from kindergarten through fifth grade until 2016. I'm here tonight because I don't want any other kids to go through what he did. By the end of fifth grade, after six years of interventions, it was obvious to me that he'd given up on reading. The school believed this was due to a lack of attention, but outside testing showed he lacked phonemic awareness to decode words efficiently, a classic characteristic of dyslexia. My son's reading difficulties were identified very early by the school. He received help through Title I and one-on-one work with reading specialists. Unfortunately, they didn't address the deficits of dyslexia. Parkway is now using a reading program called SIPs, and will start using an add-on for kids with dyslexia. I want to ask the school board to do their homework and investigate the choice of this program. For example, how does it compare to well-researched methods like Barton, Wilson, and others? According to the DESI recommendations, dyslexia intervention should be evidence-based, but there's no evidence that SIPs with the dyslexia add-on is effective. Why choose a program that doesn't have any research supporting it when there are already many that do? Please don't experiment with what works and potentially waste the efforts of teachers and students. Don't choose an untested program that's not well-researched, just because it was already purchased or the cheapest and easiest to implement. Kids and teachers deserve better. Early screening represents real progress, and I'm sure the parents of the 682 kids that have been initially identified have lots of questions. I don't know how quickly...
My name is Levi Ladd, and I am a member of the TVC Board at Parkway West High School. Today, I'm here to inform you that because there is no district-wide policy regarding vaping and juuling in Parkway, students are being exposed to numerous chemicals on a daily basis that have hazardous effects. According to the CDC, secondhand smoke from jewels, vapes, and other electronic cigarette products contains hundreds of toxic chemicals, as well as at least 70 chemicals that can cause cancer. There's a safety concern here, because these chemicals can also cause coronary heart disease, strokes, and lung cancer as well. I can't remember the last time I walked into a bathroom at our high school and it didn't smell like fruit, a common flavoring in electronic cigarette products, because someone decided they wanted to have a puff of their vape. According to WebMD, the effects of vaping harms the developing brains of kids and affects memory as well as attention. The reason we're at school every day is to learn to become better people, but because of the vaping epidemic, it is impeding our ability to do so. If we want to get kids to perform better in class, we need to take action to stop kids from getting affected by secondhand smoke. The people that vape and jewel are taking in harmful chemicals, such as arsenic and lead, which are extremely toxic, so one can infer that their lifespans are greatly decreased. Right now, the Parkway policy only refers to tobacco products. Today, we are asking for your help to expand that to jewels, vapes, and other electronic cigarette products. Once this has been implemented, we will see an exponential decrease in the usage of these cancer-causing devices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Levi. And if I could ask the audience to refrain from applause, so we could continue this process the most expedient way. Next, we have MJ Stricker.
My name is MJ Stricker, and I am a senior at Parker West High School. I am here on behalf of our Teen Voice for Change Board. I'm sure you've all heard of the juuling epidemic that has swept the nation. I'm here to talk to you about that regarding the Parkway schools. Did you know that over 75% of West students know someone that jewels that is under the age of 18? That's three out of every four students. The question I keep asking is why? Why is the number so high? Did you know that the Parkway School District doesn't have a district-wide policy when it comes to juuling and other e-cigarette products? Each school is left to decide the punishment on their own. After meeting with several schools, an administrator from Parkway South informed me that they regularly give out suspensions, and as a result, they have seen an exponential decrease in the juuling problem. At West, our administrators give out a long detention, and the numbers at West have just continued to rise. Why is it that someone who checks their phone during class gets the same punishment as someone who is doing illegal activity? I want to urge you to stand up and join me to stop students from doing this harmful device. Vaping causes your arteries to narrow by 30%, causing an increased risk of cardiovascular disease, increased blood pressure, as well as it affects users to be more prone to lung infections and chronic coughs. Enough is enough. I want to be able to go to the bathroom without fearing that I'll get locked in a bathroom stall during a jewel exchange. Again, I don't want to walk into my math or history class and be overwhelmed with the smell of flowers and fruit baskets because someone felt like they needed a hit in the middle of class. Secondhand vaping is just as bad, if not worse, than secondhand smoke. I am not and will not sit back and do nothing. The last question I have is, will you? Are you going to join me in getting a set Parkway policy? We need a policy that not only states it is against the rules for students to smoke them, but to have them in their possession as well.
Oliver, are we fixed?
Hi. I am Gabrielle, and this is Sutton Oliver, and we are members of the Teen Voice for Change Board at Parkway West. Teens say they use it because it tastes good and it helps to relax and relieve tension. They find themselves vaping to have a good time with their friend, or because they're bored and have nothing else to do. Flavors coupled with videos of vaping tricks attract teenagers. These tricks create an environment for fun and excitement. However, many adults say juuling is not an issue. According to Parkway West Middle School Resource Officer, Officer Queen, he has not considered juuling an epidemic, let alone a problem. He has only been involved in five student disciplinary situations in the past year for juuling. However, in fact, in reality, this is not true. There's been multiple studies. For example, one study found 3 million school-aged children, including more than 620,000 middle school students, use electronic cigarettes. This astonishing statistic has forced the hand of the FDA. The FDA has called this the increasing electronic cigarette use among youth as a national epidemic. Many schools, such as Dane County, have followed suit with this issue by contacting realtors of vaping devices in hopes of stopping teenage use of electronic cigarettes. What in Griner, with the Times News, examined how electronic cigarettes are the number-one cause of school suspensions. However, West doesn't even really hand out suspensions for juuling. They only do long detentions, as MJ said. So by May, the school district, though, has found that nearly half of Dane County schools had not provided staff training about vaping, yet they want to urge kids to stop. How is that possible? So I urge you guys to do better than Dane County has, and to step up and make change. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mr. Jim Furkin.
Jim Furkin, I can't begin to say what I wanted to say, but at any rate, I didn't know the pledge of allegiance issue was going to create this kind of controversy, but it did. The letter that went out to the parents was a classic example of how to discredit me, dodge the topic, and deflect the issue at hand. It was full of misinformation and accuracies, and I'd like to clear those up. A lot of the things that were said in that letter insinuated that I was in personal contact with children, students via email, text, phone number. That was not the case at all. English class, we're going to go to the lab to work on an essay. I say, "If anybody would like some help, I'd be more than happy to help you out." A kid in the back of the room goes, "What do you know about writing?" I said, "I've written six novels under the pen name of James Ross. I think I can help you with a paragraph or two." That became common knowledge down in the school. Those kids knew that I wrote books, and they knew that my pen name was James Ross. That was the sharing of personal information. The incident that Dr. Marty referred to about the videotaping, I have got no idea what he's talking about, but I'll give you the real incident, and it was filed November 19th, 2015, and an email was sent to Human Resources, December 1, 2015.
Next, we have Mary Kaiser-Miller.
I'm Mary Kaiser-Miller. I'm the owner of Dyslexia St. Louis, a parent of a child with dyslexia, and a Parkway parent. First, I think that it's important to point out that SIPs is a research-based program, not evidence-based. Parkway has stated that they will implement an evidence-based reading intervention in their report on dyslexia. Decades of research on dyslexia and the science of reading has proven children with dyslexia and those who struggle to read need a structured literacy program. It's explicit, multisensory, systematic, sequential, and taught to mastery. All of these components are Wharton-Gillingham-based, or OG. SIPs, however, does not include all the components of an evidence-based reading instruction for children with dyslexia. It is not an OG approach. After reviewing SIPs on the website, it looks really good on paper, but falls short on implementation. It does not support the needs of our struggling readers. The SIPs program begins with phonological awareness and skips over the foundation, which is phonemic awareness. They don't even cover that. Phonemic awareness is the key to our children's reading success with dyslexia. It is the core factor that separate a normal reader from a disabled reader.
Thank you very much. You're entirely welcome to submit it to the Board in writing.
I will excuse the typos.
That's okay. Thank you. Next, we have Stacy Cowan.
My son had a late diagnosis of dyslexia in fifth grade. He is now in seventh grade. The past four reading interventions have not been successful. He is currently getting support after school using the Barton Reading and Spelling Program. I've been very pleased with the results. With the great team we have this year at South Middle, I am very excited that they are truly dedicated and motivated to help my son. I hope this Board realizes how important it is to get the right reading program and technology for students with dyslexia, including students in middle and high school. The sooner this happens, the better. Dyslexia is not just an issue with reading. It affects all subjects, including writing, math, science, everything, as well as their self-esteem.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Kim Mathis.
Good evening. I'm here tonight to voice my concern for the multisensory SIPs program the customized learning team has identified as the Dyslexia Reading Curriculum Intervention. My son is a second grader at Hannah Woods. Since his dyslexia diagnosis over the summer, I have spent countless hours educating myself on the topic, so I'm prepared to advocate for my child as needed, just as these other parents that you've heard from have. In reviewing the multisensory SIPs program, I'm concerned by the lack of independent evidence proving its effectiveness as an intervention. While SIPs is supported by several solid marketing pieces, they are just that, marketing and propaganda. There is no independent evidence publicly available to prove that the program works. The SIPs distributor touts their program, quote, "meets evidence-based criteria for effective literacy instruction," but they provide no data or no scientific evidence or studies to back these claims. The district should not invest in a program without independent documented evidence of its success supporting dyslexic students. I implore the customized learning team to further review programs with input from parents and implement proven...
Thank you very much. Next, we have Shawna Barton.
Good evening. My name is Shawna Barton. I'm here, again, to talk about Parkway's structured literacy program. Well, guess what? There is no structured literacy program. I'm aware that Parkway is working towards developing a framework for progress monitoring and intervention. This flow chart looks pretty and sounds great out loud, but no one can seem to understand how to put this into effect. Using the task force recommendations, which are: evidence-based reading instruction should be implemented with fidelity, and an intervention system should contain the principles and elements of a multisensory structured literacy program. However, there are no evidence-based multisensory structured literacy programs being used at Ren Hallow Elementary. While we want to help, while we very much want to help the 20% dyslexia population, we should be utilizing the research and the evidence and help all children in Parkway. Our classrooms should be implementing a multisensory structured literacy program that includes phonological awareness, sound symbol association, syllable instruction, morphology, orthography, syntax, and semantics. Our English language is structured and has a specific code. We need to teach all kids this code. Reading and spelling go hand in hand. Comprehension and fluency impact each other. As a Wilson Dyslexia practitioner, I invite you to come speak with me and learn more about the English language and how to crack it for all students. I invite all of you to come experience dyslexia on July 31st. I'll be presenting at Churchill Center and School.
Thank you very much. Okay. And last, we have Brenda Gross, Brenda Goss. Sorry.
Good evening. My daughter is a sophomore at Parkway South High, and experience she just had was another student began yelling at her and continuously telling her he was going to beat her ass. And as she was walking near the commons one morning, he called out her name, he walked over, and he struck her in the face. The violence she endured was captured on camera, so it's free for all of you to see. It's just as I just explained it to you. The student who assaulted her had been threatening her for two months. He is a senior, and according to the football roster, he is 6'4" and 335 pounds. Okay, well, you know what? I'm not finished yet. She's a sophomore, and she's 5'3". She is 15 years old. He's two years older than her. He outweighed her by over 200 pounds, and he's literally three times her size. She reported the assault to Dr. H, and Dr. H and Mrs. Morgan, and Dr. H assured me she would handle this situation. As I left school, I contacted the resource officer, and he was surprised no one had even contacted him. So the way the situation was handled, my daughter was removed from the classroom they shared, and he returned the following day, the next school day, which would have been a Monday. And as I investigated why the complaint, I haven't heard anything regarding the complaint I filed with him, I learned that every aspect of his written report was untrue. He never even looked at the camera. If he did, everything... ...he spoke to her.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I understand. Do you have something you could provide us in writing? I absolutely do.
Okay. We'd be happy to take a look at it.
Would you like to write a formal letter? Would you like to look at my notes and describe it?
Either, either or, or both. That'd be great.
I can give you this, and I can write a formal statement.
Great. We'd appreciate it.
But I also want to say, you fire a teacher, saying that he bullied students for thanking other students for standing for the pledge of allegiance?
We haven't fired anyone, so we're not here to discuss that.
Okay. I understand.
Thank you. To everyone who spoke tonight to provide citizen statements, we appreciate your time, appreciate your comments, and we will respond to you all in writing in the next few days. Right now, we're going to take a quick break, and we will resume the meeting in just a few minutes. minutes. Let's see, December 12, 2018 is today. May I have a motion in a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education scheduled for December 12, 2018?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 6-0. The next regular board meeting will take place on Wednesday, January 16, 2018, beginning at 7:00 PM at Central Middle School. An anticipated closed session will be held at 6:00 PM. Board candidate filing began this past Tuesday, December 11, 2018, at 8:00 AM at Parkway's Administrative Center, and continues during the district's regular business hours through 5:00 PM on Tuesday, January 15, 2019. The terms of Sudhir Athan and Sam Sortino expire in April 2019. In order of filing, the candidates who have filed so far are: Number 1, Farida Hassan. And number 2, Sam Sortino. At this time, we will have board liaison reports.
I hadn't lead off tonight. So tonight, for my report, I just want to talk about the board retreat/ workshop that we all participated in a couple of weeks ago. This has been my second as a board member. The word retreat is a little misleading, and we're transitioning away from that to calling it a workshop. Essentially, it's an opportunity for the board to spend a great deal of time really getting immersed in some of the programs that the district conducts and takes part in. This latest workshop included several hours of social justice training. It was just the tip of the iceberg, but I thought it was a great experience for all of us to see the program that our teachers and students participate in and to take part in it ourselves. Then there was also presentations about various other programs and issues facing the district. I'm 6 months into this role, but I continue to be impressed and really just blown away by the breadth of endeavors that the school district is involved with, and it never ceases to amaze me how many interesting and diverse things that this district is dealing with and doing on a daily basis.
Okay. I'll just mention 2 things, 1 being a meeting that Jeff and I and several members of the administrative team had with the West County Community Action Network, which is a group of individuals out in the West County area focused on making sure that, or helping districts in the area implement the recommendations from the Ferguson Commission Report around student achievement, and making sure that students of color have the same opportunities in our schools as students who are not students of color. I think it was a great meeting. I think everybody felt good walking out of it, so that was positive. I'll also say that Sam and I and Dr. Marty had a chance to participate in the first St. Louis County School Board's Professional Learning Community, which was a Saturday event put together by representatives from about 9 different school districts across St. Louis County who kind of realized we're all trying to learn about a lot of the same things, so why don't we all come together and learn together? It was attended by representatives from, I think, 14 school districts in St. Louis County of the 22 total?
2, 23, something like that.
22 or 23 total districts. So we felt really good about the number of districts that had board members attend, and we talked about the Ready by 21 initiative, which is a regional initiative around making sure that all the kids in our region are ready to be successful by age 21, based on a number of different items. So I think it was good, and we'll likely do another one of those in the next few months.
Okay. My report is gonna be about the Special School District Governing Council meeting that we just had Monday evening. Our primary agenda item on that evening was talking about the Special School District's next Board of Education election and the process. Parkway School District has a Board of Education seat that is up to be filled in March. March 4 of 2019 will be the election evening for the Special School District Board of Education Representatives for Subdistrict 3, which is Parkway, as well as Subdistrict 4, which is Ferguson, Florissant, Pattonville, and Riverview Gardens. So I would like to announce that if anyone has any interest in running for this Board of Election position, I would urge you to contact the Special School District. Filing is taking place right now. You can file at the Special School District office. The paperwork should be on the website, and then the election will take place. That is the responsibility of the Governing Council to elect the Special School District Board of Education members. So we have these 2 seats up, one of which is Parkway. Peg Listina has been our representative for many, many years and will not be running again, so this will be an open position. So I deem it very, very important that we get the word out that Parkway needs to fill this very important position. Thank you.
I'll share 2 quick things, 1 being the fact that I love school board meetings so much. I attended a Kirkwood School Board meeting recently, too, and it's just, it's good to build those relationships again, like Christie said, too, with other school districts and ways that we work together, and it was good to see, too, I think I have a little more appreciation for how we run things here at Parkway, too, so it was a good. And then I'll also say, too, for the candidate filings, I encourage the candidates who are interested in running for the school board to reach out to us, because I'll say as a candidate, last year, everybody here I talked to before Election Day, and they just get the advice, the knowledge, and even just some tips and tricks, too, as you go through your campaign, to reach out to us. We want to be a resource for you, too. That's all.
I just want to also relate to what Christie said about the St. Louis County School Board session that took place a couple Saturdays ago. This is a first-time event. Christie didn't take the credit, but I wanted to recognize her because she was part of the committee, and there was a very, very well-outlined program for the morning. But once again, there were some really great opportunities for us to interact with other school board members from the other 14 school districts. Other than the Ready 21 presentation, there was a breakout session. It's too bad that we couldn't attend all of them, but we did have an opportunity to choose. The sessions basically dealt with educational equity, early childhood education, college career, ready students, and the whole child. And they were very, very interesting discussions. After the discussions, the group came back together and shared out, you know, what they discussed in their particular group. So it was very, very beneficial, and I think it was a great opportunity for us just to interact with other board members to discuss what they are doing, and some of the themes that we talk about all the time are the same things that are happening in other districts, too. It's all about kids and what we can do to help kids and all. The other thing that I attended, and the district annually, maybe twice a year, has a luncheon for the Administrative Center staff, and Jeff and I attended that and had a great lunch with a great group of people that serve our district in many, many ways that really is beneficial to our students. And Dr. Marty and Chelsea had a little skit that was kind of fun and kind of lighthearted, but it's a time that people get together and see one another. They see each other throughout the day from time to time, but to see everyone together in a group, enjoying themselves and having great conversation and feeling very much pride in what they do to support this district and support the students that they serve, basically. So I want to thank Dr. Marty for even hosting something like that.
Thank you, Sam. In addition to some of the things that the other board members mentioned, I was fortunate enough to participate in the Parkway Food Pantry Thanksgiving food distribution. So 2nd year in a row, they started it last year, obviously, but this was the 2nd year that they allowed board members to come help pack a lot of food boxes. I think we packed 80 boxes or so that went out to a number of needy families here, right here in Parkway. These are families that are served by the Food Pantry on a regular basis, but this was a complete Thanksgiving meal in a box. It was everything from the turkey to the pie to the butter and the rolls and vegetables and everything that was needed. And just getting a chance to talk to some of the families that were the beneficiaries of these, it really made a difference, and the Parkway Food Pantry continues to make a huge difference in the lives of so many right here in our district. So that was a great experience. And then, just a couple of weeks ago, I got to participate, not participate, but I got to sit in, listen to the Parkway West Jazz, not just the Jazz Choir, but the Jazz Band. A number of years ago, the Jazz program was very strong at West High, and it kind of fell by the wayside, and Brian Parrish has resurrected it and brought it back, and it is flourishing, and kids are getting excited about a whole different genre of music that they hadn't been exposed to previously. So it was a great event. I think at one point, we had 22 pieces playing on stage, and so it was a really nice event.
I would just, perhaps, if anyone is interested in contributing to the Food Pantry, it's always, this is a busy time. My administrative team is actually gonna participate in a packing event next week now for the holidays coming up, but if there's, if you are looking to donate, we certainly would welcome that, and it's at Northeast Middle, but we can provide information. If you just want to call our office, we can give you more details. But I think it's wonderful the district has stepped up, and we have social workers and Student Services, I know Charlotte EJ, yeah, she's still here, and her social workers have really done a marvelous job. So I think we welcome continued assistance from our public to make sure our families are taken care of, especially at this time of the year.
Okay, moving on. Our next Subcommittee Meetings, upcoming ones, Monday, January 7, at 4:30 PM will be the HR Finance Subcommittee Meeting at the Administrative Center. Tuesday, January 22, at 4:30 PM, the Student Services Subcommittee Meeting will be held at ISC. Tuesday, January 29, at 4:30 PM, the TLA Subcommittee Meeting will be held at ISC. Wednesday, February 6, at 8:30 AM, will be the Project Parkway Steering Committee Meeting at ISC. Next, we have Consent Items, 10.0. And may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the December 12, 2018 Board Materials?
So moved.
Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries 6-0. There are no action items tonight. There are no policy review items tonight, but we do have a report on dyslexia. So if I could have Patrick Shelton, Coordinator of Customized Learning, join us. Good evening.
Good evening, President Todd, Vice President Sortino, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Ms. Stover, and of course, our guests. Tonight, we're honored to present a report on the implementation of our new dyslexia requirements for the 2018-2019 school year. This evening, we're gonna provide an overview of the legislation and guidance, the process that we have followed as we determine those action steps to meet those requirements, and the first look at the data from our screening from this fall. There we go. With the signing of Senate Bill 638 and House Bill 2379 by Governor Nixon in June of 2016, a series of statewide actions was set into motion. The legislation authorized the creation of the Legislative Task Force on Dyslexia, which was charged with determining recommendations for the creation of a statewide system for identification, intervention, and delivery of supports for students with characteristics of dyslexia. The final report from the task force created recommendations, which were then put into guidance for school districts. The guidance from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education included information related to the screening and identification of students with characteristics of dyslexia, determining reasonable classroom supports for students with characteristics of dyslexia, and provided 2 hours of in-service training for all certified staff members. Before we talk about Parkway's plan for students with characteristics of dyslexia, you're gonna hear that term a lot, I want to provide you with a little bit of background knowledge around dyslexia. Watch this video.
Take a moment to read the following.
Oops, sorry about that. Try it one more time.
Take a moment to read the following. How was that? Frustrating? Slow? What were those sentences about? They're actually a simulation of the experience of dyslexia, designed to make you decode each word. Those with dyslexia experience that laborious pace every time they read. When most people think of dyslexia, they think of seeing letters and words backwards, like seeing D as D and vice versa, or they might think people with dyslexia see S as words. The truth is, people with dyslexia see things the same way as everyone else. Dyslexia is caused by a phonological processing problem, meaning people affected by it have trouble not with seeing language, but with manipulating it. For example, if you heard the word cat and then someone asks you to remove the C, what word would you have left? Hat. This can be difficult for those with dyslexia. Given a word in isolation like fantastic, students with dyslexia need to break a word into parts to read it. Fan-tastic. Time spent decoding makes it hard to keep up with hears and gain sufficient comprehension. Spelling words phonetically like STIK for stick and FREN S for friends is also common. These difficulties are more widespread and varied than commonly imagined. Dyslexia affects up to 1 in 5 people. It occurs on a continuum. One person might have mild dyslexia, while the next person has a profound case of it. Dyslexia also runs in families. It's common to see one family member who has trouble spelling, while another family member has severe difficulty decoding even one syllable. severe difficulty decoding even one syllable words like "patch."
So just a little bit of information to give you some background on dyslexia. We're all, of course, familiar with our mission statement, which ensures that all students are curious, capable, caring, and confident learners. Part of the way our district operationalizes that mission statement and the work in intervention is through our Framework of Progress Monitoring and Intervention, or the Identify, Respond, Monitor Framework. Using this framework allows us to evaluate the root cause for a student struggling with any aspect of school, put interventions in place to meet that need, and then evaluate the effectiveness of the intervention, and then make adjustments as needed. The work of the Legislative Task Force on Dyslexia and the recommendations for school districts allowed us to raise the level of awareness for the way in which we meet the needs of students, and help us identify a population with which we can respond with more specific interventions. In other words, tying our mission statement and the Framework for Progress Monitoring to the intervention and the guidance provided by DESI gives us an opportunity to improve our effectiveness and help us truly meet our mission. Following the publication of the guidance from DESI in the spring of 2018, we convene a group of stakeholders to form the Parkway Dyslexia Action Team. This team included building principals, counselors, classroom teachers, special educators, and district administrators, and spent two days learning about dyslexia, understanding characteristics that can be present with students, how this work aligns with our mission, and come into consensus on some recommendations for implementation. The team was given two main charges. First, to determine the assessment tools and process for screening students for characteristics of dyslexia. There was strong input from the team that if possible, we should use assessment tools which were already available. And second, we should align the screening process of data collection to reduce any assessments which would be duplicated. By adopting SRI Foundations, we were able to utilize a tool that was already in place and reduce the number of required assessments at the early elementary level. Second, input regarding professional development was to, as much as possible, be incorporated in a meaningful way for district-certified staff. As you may already know, Parkway staff go through a number of required trainings at the beginning of the school year, with the number increasing every year in addition to dyslexia. By creating different online modules of training, we were able to maintain the number of required assessments for the beginning of the school year, and also use district development time on January 2nd for staff to require, to complete all of those required trainings. Following the work of the Dyslexia Action Team, a draft plan went out to several stakeholder groups for feedback. That included building principals, district administrators, and community stakeholders. Over the past two years, we've been involved in communication with a variety of individuals regarding this work. Parents of students who have been identified as dyslexic, community members who are embedded in the work of dyslexia advocacy, and individuals who are just interested in this work. As we've met with them, we've invited them to provide feedback through the lens with which they view dyslexia, through policy, through intervention, or as a parent. As indicated in the guidance, screening needs to occur three times for students in grades 1 through 3, with the first assessment being conducted within the first 30 days of school. And students in kindergarten should be assessed twice with the first assessment being conducted prior to January 31st. In Parkway, students in grades 1 through 3 were assessed initially within the first 30 days, and subsequent assessments have been administered, have been scheduled for January and May, which will provide us with data that will inform the effectiveness of our interventions, as well as identify students who may be exhibiting characteristics of dyslexia. The first window of completion for students in kindergarten closed on November 30th, and schools have received data and are working through their list of students who were initially identified. Students in grades 4 through 12 who are performing below grade level in reading are assessed with more intensive diagnostic assessments at the request of school teams or parents. Our universal screening tool for students in kindergarten through 2nd grade, SRI Foundations, assesses students in a variety of areas through an online assessment tool. This allows us to quickly assess students and gather results, so we can move forward with identifying students who may exhibit characteristics of dyslexia. Identifying a group of students using these tools gives school teams the opportunity to apply more diagnostic tools, such as the Dyslexia Indicators Checklist, the PAST, and the CTOP 2, to rule out students who may have been identified through a false positive, while also digging deeper into areas of phonological processing for students to identify those areas of weakness. This graph represents the results of the first screening and identification process from this year for grades 1 through 3. Grades 1 and 2 demonstrated a very similar pattern of results, while 3rd grade reflected more students potentially at risk. We're going to continue to monitor this pattern as the additional screenings take place. There are several possible explanations for the difference, including using different universal screening measures, but we're going to collect more data before we draw any conclusions. For kindergarten, as I mentioned, universal screening was just completed, and school teams are working through the process right now of identifying students and matching them to the right type of support. Parkway's providing supported all three tiers of instruction for students with characteristics of dyslexia. First, we're improving implementation of explicit phonics instruction within the K-2 curriculum. New phonics units from the Teachers College that are aligned with our Reading and Writing Workshop have been purchased for each building, and development around implementations ongoing in buildings, and will be offering more district-wide development in the summer of 2019. We're also providing development and classroom supports, which will include accommodations and modifications for students who exhibit characteristics of dyslexia, as well as assistive technology supports which are available. Finally, the interventions being provided to students who ultimately exhibit a high need based on the screening and diagnostic assessments are being provided using the SIPs program. SIPs stands for Systematic Instruction in Phonological Awareness, Phonics, and Sight Words. In addition to explicit phonics instruction, a multisensory component has been added for this school year and purchased by Parkway for all of our reading specialists in each building. We will continue to evaluate the effectiveness of this intervention, and will be adding more interventions in the future to address the needs of students. The second portion of the recommendation included providing classroom supports for students who may exhibit characteristics of dyslexia. Because the characteristics can vary widely from student to student, providing classroom teachers with a menu of accommodations and modifications from which to choose, and incorporating tools for students to use related to technology allows teachers to access the tools that they need to help students be successful. For example, at the elementary level, students with characteristics of dyslexia will often struggle to process written directions. Providing students with the opportunity to verbally repeat and process those directions which are written on the board will help a student with characteristics of dyslexia gain a better understanding of what's being asked of them. At the secondary level, note-taking presents a significant challenge for students who may exhibit characteristics of dyslexia due to the focus on writing that may be required. Providing those students with notes or an outline of the lesson or the activity will allow the students to follow along with what's going on without the need to write. There are also a variety of tools using technology which can provide supports that are needed for students to be successful. In Parkway, part of our training for teachers included instructions around several Google extensions, which can be downloaded and used on the Google Chrome browser, and can provide assistance with reading, speaking, and writing, and accommodating a student's writing to correct the inversions, transpositions, and manipulations of letters, which often cause a student to fall short in their writing. The requirements and recommendations for professional development from the task force included two hours of professional development for all certified staff members in Missouri. The task force recommended development in four specific areas, providing staff with an overview and simulation of dyslexia, comprehensive literacy instruction, the process for screening and identification of students, and the classroom supports which are available to teachers and students. For certified staff in Parkway, four modules of professional development were created in an online format, covering each of the four areas recommended by the task force. All certified staff have been given time during the Development Day on January 2nd to complete those modules. So this is Phase 1 of implementation of our response to dyslexia. Moving forward, we're going to follow a continuous improvement model by collecting information, analyzing results, and making decisions to improve our practices to meet the needs of students. We plan to analyze data from our current screening tool to evaluate whether or not we're identifying the students appropriately and with the most efficient method. We also plan to evaluate the effectiveness of our current intervention, SIPs, to assess the ability of this resource to meet the needs of students with characteristics of dyslexia. We will also be evaluating other phonics-based interventions for inclusion in the toolbox of interventions available to reading specialists. Given the initial development of dyslexia was targeted to all educators in the four areas indicated by the task force, moving forward, we're going to be developing additional development opportunities both online and through after-school and summer development to expand on the initial trainings. Finally, we continue to seek feedback from all stakeholder groups in areas related to their experiences. We're also in the planning stages of an informational event for parents of students who may exhibit characteristics of dyslexia to gather more information and seek out resources. And John Barrow, my fellow coordinator in crime in customized learning, and I would be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Well, start. You just mentioned you're going to do a complete evaluation of the SIPs program. What's your timeline for that?
So we purchased the new multisensory component this year, so we'll look at this year's data at the end of the year, and then evaluate moving forward from there.
In this school year?
Yeah. We definitely want to have a menu of interventions, much like we have for our other areas of reading, available for teachers.
I'm not entirely sure this is a fair question. If it's not, please feel free to disregard it. But you were here during some of the citizen statements where some parents commented on SIPs and some other aspects of our program. How would you respond to some of the concerns that were raised?
You want to take it with me, too? I'll be happy to. I'll answer first, and if John wants to add anything, he's more than welcome to do that. So first of all, I think that there is not a one-size-fits-all model to any intervention. I'll say that inside of reading, and then in other areas as well. As I mentioned, we want to evaluate something that we currently have in place that our teachers are trained on, and that the revisions to that program have been made, but we also are very open to other interventions, because as I mentioned, there's never one intervention that's going to meet the needs of each student. So we need to have a menu of interventions that are available. SIPs is certainly one of those interventions, but we already have other interventions in place and are open to adding interventions as well that are specific to dyslexia. Anything?
And we obviously, we don't have it figured out, and so we need to look at some things different. And we currently don't have Orton-Gillingham-type products in our current repertoire or toolbox, as Patrick said, so we need to start looking at what those things, those other things are, so that we can meet the needs of the kids that we currently aren't addressing.
Tagging on to that, have we looked at what other districts around us are doing?
Yeah, actually, we started with kind of just a volunteer consortium, involved several districts. It was just folks that were kind of coming together. Met with Kim Stuckey, who was the DESI Director for Dyslexia for Missouri, and we came together and just started talking about how to roll out implementation. And actually, one of the administrators from Lindbergh just contacted us, and we're going to follow up after the break. And so, and what she's doing is she's collecting, it's a Google form, and collecting exactly what you just asked, what people are using, not only intervention-wise, but what's their curriculum look like, what other kinds of supplemental supports do they have. So we're real excited to kind of hook back up with that group and learn more about that.
What about involving the Special School District? What has been their feedback and involvement in this process, and how do they feel about using the SIPs program?
Funny you should say that. We just met with Bobby Fleming, when was that?
Yesterday.
Monday, Tuesday? I don't know. One day this week. And so, each district is under the obligation to meet the requirements in DESI, so Special School District has been doing their own professional development and organizing their own structures and supports. We shared with them that, we're trying to get clarity right now in terms of, because some of the students that came up on the screenings are students that might already be identified either with a disability or in our current reading intervention programs. And so we followed up with them about how to respond when parents are saying, hey, I need something different, or just how are we paying attention to the student outcomes and doing something different when that happens. And so, Special School District currently has Wilson in its kind of in places, which is an Orton-Gillingham method program. Bobby didn't say anything specifically about plans to expand. We did share exactly what we said to you guys, that right now, we have students that aren't being met by the needs, and that we need to start exploring and finding out how that works. So they understand that we're doing that, but I don't know specifically what their plans are in that regard.
Just to add, I had a phone call from a parent last week who was really concerned because her child had a medical diagnosis of dyslexia, and we had indicated that there were no characteristics of dyslexia present in our screening. And what we're looking for is how is this manifesting in the school setting? And so for a lot of kids, if we have found the right intervention, they're going to show up as not having characteristics of dyslexia. That's actually a good thing. It's what we want. She was concerned that we were going to change her programming from the SSD side. So there's good things happening with a lot of kiddos. I think the important part is to align what's going on within Special School District and Parkway, so that we're all operating from the same game plan with them when it comes to student instruction.
And that's one of my additional questions is when you say that students who are displaying characteristics of dyslexia, what does that look like? So, because that could come in so many different ways. So what is this district looking at as characteristics, displaying characteristics of dyslexia? What are they looking at?
You want to talk more about the assessment?
Yeah, go ahead.
You want to talk about diagnosing? I'll let you take it first.
So there are some basic skills typically that students are having difficulty developing, like that were described in the video. So it's really kind of that phonemic process, being able to kind of put those words together in order to be able to read fluently and comprehend. There's also, what hasn't been talked a lot, and is something that we're going to have to do, there's also an orthographic piece to this, so in writing. So it can really impact the child's ability to write and put words down on paper. Obviously, spelling is an issue, but it's even broader than that. So it's really kind of those basic reading processes that, and so the whole thing with Orton-Gillingham and other programs like that, is it gets very intense and specific about those basic skills. And it's provided in a program where you eliminate those gaps that children develop over time. Because what happens early on, and why we're excited about the screening and finding kids earlier, is that typically, kids with dyslexia find ways to compensate, particularly in the early grades. And so it kind of goes under the radar for the most part. And so what could happen then is that then they'll hit a wall at some point, whenever those strategies are no longer able to help them, or they just kill themselves in terms of the amount of time that they put into school. So it can manifest a lot of different ways. I mean, you look at the research, there are things that, there's kind of comorbid kinds of things that happen a lot with ADHD and other kinds of neurologic and processing things. It's obviously a big part of language, so it can look very different, I think is the thing. It can manifest differently. And as we're saying, we need to be flexible and have a variety of things that we can put in for, because one thing isn't guaranteed to work all the time because of that variability.
And are all of our teachers going to be trained to identify this issue?
So we've started with our reading specialists this year intensely, trying to get them more information, get them, we bought the CTOP, so we used the SRI, which is our screener, because we had it, but then we used money to invest in a diagnostic tool, because we wanted to get down to what is it that we need to do instructionally, where is it breaking down for the students? And so the CTOP is a really comprehensive tool. It's administered individually, and it gives you that kind of information. And so we started with our reading specialists to kind of address the needs of those most intense students. As Patrick said, we're starting to roll out in the primary grades some curriculum things around phonics. And so teachers are going to be receiving, currently, there are teachers who are receiving training on it now. There's also going to be a big training offered this summer and into next school year.
Because I know that the reading specialists don't interact with every child, and it's going to be those frontline teachers, it's that homeroom teacher of the K through 5 kid that's going to identify this, and then take it to the reading specialist's attention. So I'm, and even in middle school or high school. So how is that kind of professional development going to happen?
Why don't you review, once again, the modulars and the things that you have used?
So we have nine videos that have gone out through safe schools to all of our classroom teachers, and they cover the four modules. So the first one is just an overview and understanding of dyslexia. And as the video mentioned, it looks different in every student. So my wife's a 3rd grade teacher in a different district, and she came home the other day and said, okay, I got this student that spelled "friend" two different ways on the same page. Does that mean he has dyslexia? I don't know. Maybe. I mean, that's one of the characteristics that you could see, but rapid recall of things is also a characteristic. Not being able to make, to sound out words is another. So there are characteristics that are going to look different from student to student. The idea behind the screener is that we're catching students early before they show those outcomes in student learning. So we see them, you know, in 2nd, 3rd, 4th grade, struggle with comprehension, struggle with fluency. So giving everybody kind of an overview of what that could look like, I think, is helpful, but the screener is really where we want to start to pick up students. And we do want to identify more students, and then drill down to find out who really is exhibiting some of those characteristics. Because it looks so different, I don't know that we'll ever say the student, we will not diagnose a student as having dyslexia, but we will say they have some characteristics that are kind of fall in that area. The important thing is, we want to be able to respond to those characteristics. So that's... thing is we want to be able to respond to those characteristics. So the first module is really around that overview and simulation, understanding what dyslexia is. And then the second piece is comprehensive literacy. That's the second module. The third one is how we screen and identify in Parkway. And then the fourth one is how you support that at the classroom level.
Okay. And then my other question, you had a slide up, and it went kind of fast, about what happens in fourth grade through 12th grade? Is it considered parent-initiated? Here we are. Yeah. So students below level, below grade level reading expectations and then school year.
So students are reading below grade level at the request of the teacher, the intervention team, anyone at the school level, or the parent. We would then continue to implement the diagnostic measures to try to get more information about what's going on with the student.
Okay. So when, how would a parent who's concerned go to work, go through this process to request for their screening?
So they could contact anybody at the school level and say, hey, I'm concerned because my child's not doing what they should be doing. Can you investigate? And then that would then trigger a reading specialist to come in and administer those assessments.
At any grade level, from 4th through 12th?
At any grade level.
Okay. So just to bring to your attention, and you may know about this, there are times where parents will do that, and then the school will say, well, we don't see it. Therefore, we can't, we're not going to do anything. And that's very frustrating to a parent who sees their child, you know, working, not getting through the homework on the weekends, the struggles that they go through, and you just scratch your hair and say, how can nobody see that this is happening? So how can we improve on that communication with the parents? And how do we help parents that, you know, are seeing something, but yet the school's not seeing it, and then we're at this impasse?
So our first point of contact on our end are our reading specialists that are in our buildings. We have reading specialists in almost every school. We have folks in each school that work on intervention teams, and we're in constant communication with them, as well as building principals, and then through our trainings as well. So this information is in all of the trainings, so all of the teachers see this information. Again, how do they act upon it? We also get calls from parents all the time, and contact a school on behalf of parents to try to initiate that process. Anything?
And so, and really, the point of the modules, we hope to have more different, more face, more workshop kinds of development with teachers in the future. But this is a way for us to meet the requirement and start to raise the level of awareness. I think that the parents will tell you that education, and it's not just Parkway, this is a national thing, this dyslexia legislation is happening in just about every state in our country right now. But what happened is just that you say dyslexia, and all of a sudden there was a barrier that would pop up with the school. So what we're trying to do is get people comfortable to be able to talk about that, and that we can get kind of beneath the label and start talking about what's happening with the students, so that we can best meet that student's needs. To say that a student's struggling, but we don't do dyslexia, that's not, I mean, so that's not something that is acceptable for Parkway, for any of our schools. And so are there going to be people who might still do that? I think so. But I think that that's why we see this as a long haul. With leadership, a decision was made that we wanted to implement this to move towards change, which means that it could be a little bit of a slower process rather than just meeting the requirements. But that's kind of our commitment.
And are you open to the idea of doing more than a single program? So if SIPs works for some, and the OG works for others, are, is, how are you feeling about the idea of having, you know, multiple different types of approaches to meet each child's needs?
We have to have multiple interventions to choose from. Absolutely.
Okay.
I think you heard Patrick say a continuous model. And really, we started this discussion that we're not just going to follow the state law. I mean, you can, you know, follow and do the basics. But we really want to do this well and do it with a lot of evaluation, a lot of feedback, and maybe make changes along the way. So what you're seeing tonight may change and be different. And certainly, I think you heard Patrick also say, we're going to try to increase the toolbox of teachers and all the reading interventionists.
Just a process comment on the acknowledgements. It's not really a question. Just, there's a list of the community feedback team, and when I see that, I assume some level of sign-off or agreement with, you know, that they've seen the report and that they agree to it. And I don't get the impression that that's the case with three of those four people here tonight. So just, I think it would be helpful to me, because I do make that assumption when I see, when I see that on the page. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So what is the end result, given the fact that youngster has gone to the best interventions and support systems, et cetera, and then becomes an adult, you know, in 2021? So what's that going to be like for a child, for a young person?
Who's been successful in the interventions?
Right.
Hopefully, they've learned strategies and have kind of made their way through school and become a successful, productive citizen of America. I mean, that's, and we've seen that happen. Go ahead.
They had the opportunity to attend some of the hearings as the legislation was moving through and was being presented to the task force as they were collecting information. A lot of students talked about, I mean, obviously, the frustrations of going through school in a system that didn't always recognize what their needs were or provided. What they talked about is like developing the coping skills, and actually, technology is really helping a lot in terms of being able to do, you know, speech to text or teach, you know, vice versa. A lot of websites and other tools that are out there that they can utilize to access information that they previously weren't available to. So I think that it's really kind of, one is that we want to continue to work intensely on ensuring that they're able to read. But along the way, we have to ensure that we're also giving them access to the content that they're going to need to be successful. And so I think it's those things going hand in hand, and like we do with kids as they develop, it's like, how do we start to release that responsibility to them as they start to advocate and learn what they need?
Thank you.
You know, dyslexia is kind of like a number of things that have happened in this country. And I just want to say to the parents that are here and many, many others, through their efforts, they changed legislation. They made this happen. And, I mean, I'll just say, as an educator, we, you know, as was said tonight, we've somewhat, you know, oftentimes made excuses. And I'm not proud of that. So to these parents and many others around the state, around the nation, congratulations. And we want to continue working with parents. We want to continue listening to them and provide guidance and help. We certainly don't want to, you know, we appreciate their feedback. We understand their concerns, and we'll keep listening, because this is an ongoing process. But I personally have learned so much the last couple of years, just listening to some of the parents and their stories, their frustrations, and, you know, some people who have had long struggles with children. It's very, very difficult. I mean, we all know when children struggle, we struggle. And so we have an obligation. I think we're excited. I'm pleased, finally, to be able to say that we're stepping up. And, you know, 40 years ago, it was the special needs, and it's been gifted, parents have spoken up over the years for gifted education. And this is another example of parents really going to work for their children and their other children, and they've changed, they've changed legislation, and they've changed what we're going to do. And good for them. Proud of them. And they, I want to congratulate them and their advocacy, and I hope they continually continue to work with us and support us as well as challenge us. I think that's what we like to see. And we've reached out to parents, we'll certainly reach out to others as well.
I have just a couple of questions. As you've talked with, well, first, you mentioned you had two days of training for the reading specialists. Was that enough?
No.
Okay.
That's ongoing. Yeah, it's ongoing.
Okay. In this last year, what kind of feedback have you gotten from the reading specialists? Have they given you feedback that supports that we're moving in the right direction? Do we need more reading specialists? What takeaways do you have from their feedback?
I think I haven't heard anybody say more. We just, we had some cuts last year, so they're kind of, so I haven't heard more. I think that it's just working with them, because I think that we've kind of fallen prey a little bit to philosophy of instruction rather than following student outcomes. So I think that there are, there are just some philosophical differences that happen between dyslexia associations and like the International Literacy Association, those kinds of things. So really, we're trying to push through those things that are kind of wrapped up in it, and really kind of focus on, hey, what we're doing isn't working. We need to look at something different. So I'd say the majority of the folks are open to that. The other folks who so far have been quiet, no one has kind of made noise about it. But I expect that there are people out there that are kind of, that are still not believing. But that's why we're going to keep pushing the student results and that information out there. And I think that we're going to see some better results. And I think that's going to quickly get people on board.
I think every educator who's been around a little while can point back to a student who struggled and not know why. And now they're starting to understand that there's more out there that they didn't know. And I think that's refreshing in a way, because it's frustrating when you're especially a reading specialist who's highly trained in reading instruction, and yet you're not making progress with a student. So I think, I think that's been refreshing to be able to go, hey, you know, there is more I need to learn, and I can still do better with kids.
Can I also say, just as a parent of a struggling student, that it can't just be reading specialists. It has to be all educators, science, math, because it will be that one trigger that causes something to say, aha, this is where I think we need to go. And it could be any educator, not just a reading specialist. And it's got to be everybody on board to understand that, you know, okay, maybe the child doesn't think that, you know, they're very good in science. Well, maybe it's because they're just getting everything all, you know, turned up. So I really feel very strongly that it has to be every educator, not just a certain niche of educators that are being, you know, focused in on trying to deal with this particular issue.
One little piece of our training that I hope all of our educators at Parkway pay attention to is a slide in the fourth module around classroom supports. And it talks about how this could manifest in each of the content areas at the secondary level, including fine arts, PE and health, visual art. So there's areas where it's going to carry over across every content area and every classroom. And so I really hope that that's the initial message that we do want to send, is that you'll see it, no matter what you do with kids, you're going to see this at some point.
And that could be a behavioral issue, too. You know, if you've got a child that's acting up in class, it's because they can't focus. They don't know what's going on. They can't understand what's going on. It's not so much a behavior issue, it's because they can't learn. And the behavior issue will get straightened out if we can get their learning straightened out.
I just want to just address your point about reading specialists can't be, and we're, yeah, we 100% agree. Reading specialists are looked to by classroom teachers for guidance and counsel. And if we don't have them on board, then it's going to, and so we're thinking strategically. I mean, that's a lot of people. That's a lot. And so we, first, we have some time with the reading specialists was one reason. But also, we're thinking that if we can start to develop those concentric circles, where we can just start to expand the information and knowledge and start to influence people's beliefs by, once again, by altering children's outcomes. And 100%, you know, we can get more intense. We can't get better with the intervention. But if we're not providing those kinds of supports during the child's school day, then we're not going to be successful.
And the other thing that I understand, and I don't mean to belabor this, it's just a very passion of mine, is the transition year. So fifth into sixth grade, eighth into ninth grade, those seem to be trigger years. And I even think about students that have transferred into our school district, either from a private school, that may not have gotten the level of special education that they needed or help that they needed. Now they're coming into our district maybe later on, either as a high schooler or as a middle schooler. And knowing that we're going to be able to provide some supports to those students even, you know, because maybe nobody ever saw it or noticed it, or, you know, did anything about it. And now they're in this, the school district that's going to be alert and on board with trying to help them to learn. And so knowing that we're going to have those supports in place, even in middle and high school, I think is really very important as well. Thank you for everything that you're trying to do here.
And I'll say thank you, too. I commend you all on the work that you've done this last year, you and the entire team. And obviously, it goes without saying, even though I'm going to say it again, this is something that we knew needed to be fixed. And legislation caused us to take that next step. But as we, as we think about Parkway, we are leaders in so many areas. We're just across the board. We're much higher than the state averages in a lot of ways. And we expect that we will be a leader in this area as well, meeting the needs of all of our students. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Next, 14.0, we have a work session. So if we could have Patty join us and Brian join us. Talk some budget assumptions.
Good evening. President Todd, Vice President Sorrentino, members of the Board of Education, Dr. Marty and Ms. Stover. This evening, Brian and I will discuss some of the budget assumptions that we have come up with so far. As we're doing the budget, first, we begin with a deep dive into the revenues. So Brian's going to do that deep dive into the revenues and the forecast for those for you. And then I'm going to follow up with some of the expenditures and where we're at with those so far. Oh, sorry, double clip. So looking at our timeline, so of course, tonight, we're doing the presentation of our assumptions. We'll have a written report with those assumptions that we present for your approval next month. In the meantime, we send out all of our budget preparation documents to our program budget managers, our building budget managers, really by next week. And then they begin working on that budget process. They do a zero-based budgeting. They turn that into my office kind of the second week of February. From there, we compile all of that. We look to see, is it on target with our targeted expenditures? Is it not? We work with the groups to make sure that we are meeting our goals for our students and, you know, serving our students. By April 10, we will actually have a budget presentation for you of where we're at. And then at the June board meeting, we will have our 100-page-plus budget book for your review and your approval. So putting the budget together is like putting a puzzle together. So we have a lot of moving parts and places, and it takes all of us working together to put all those pieces together. So like I said, I'll turn it over first to Brian for an explanation of our pieces of our revenue.
Good evening. So as she said, we start with our revenues, because you don't know how much you can spend until you know how much money you're going to bring in. As you can tell from the chart, local, it's our biggest source. It's always been our biggest source. If we were to break down that graph even further, property taxes make up 72% of it. And then our second biggest, which isn't broken out individually, is the PropC sales tax. So, you know, between those two sources, we're at almost 80% of our revenue, with everything else coming slightly smaller. So we'll start, you know, the biggest thing we have to examine every year is property taxes. There's a few components of it. The first component is the collection rate. So that's how much we receive, you know. We're never going to get 100% of what we tax out, because the county takes a 1.5% cut right off the top. So the most we could ever get is 98.5%. 98% used to be kind of where we were hitting. We started getting all the protest and taxes settlements the last several years, and that put us seven years under 96, 96.5. We're thinking now, the protest and taxes aren't supposed to be any more than two years behind, so we're hoping to get to 97% going forward. Maybe it'll get a little higher. I know those percentages may not sound like much, but just a quarter of a percent is over $430,000 to the district. So it really adds up. And if you were to actually look with our debt service and capital projects, it's close to a half a million for just a quarter of a percent. So we do, that collection rate is very important to us. But, and then even this year so far, we've only gotten a couple of property tax payments. And from there, we can see the negative amounts. We're already 2.5 million were negative amounts just so far this year. And, you know, we've collected maybe a, I don't know, a tenth of our total year for property taxes. So, okay. So like I said, that's the first component of how we look at our property taxes. The second is the CPI, Consumer Price Index. This is more of a, the way to think of this is a cap on how much we can collect. If the CPI grows 2%, we can't collect more than 2% more than we did the prior year. There's also new construction, which we'll get to, but this is a pretty big cap. Historically, you know, if you'll notice, we had a couple of years where it was below 1%. So that cap was pretty low. So we were actually, we had years, you know, our assessment grew, but by way more than those numbers, but we were just never able to have our revenue grow that much because of the CPI being so low. And what we find, too, is in reassessment years, our assessment grows less than the CPI. So we don't even get a notice. In reassessment years, we don't get the benefit of the CPI being high. And then in assessment years, it kind of lowers how much can be collected. So, and like I said, if you think of the CPI as pretty much the big cap on what we can assess for property taxes, the next is estimated new construction. It's, I hate to paraphrase here, but it's essentially CPI plus new construction is our cap. I have, I think, the statewide expert in property I have, I think, the statewide expert in property taxes behind me, so. As you can see, we're, we had some years where it was very high, and then 2012, or 2012 through 2014, it was low. I think our thought is it was so low those years because you think it was projects planned in the middle of the recession, '08, '09. People weren't really planning things, and it takes, always takes a few years from the date of the inception of a project till it comes online. So I think that's the main reason it was so low that year. We also maybe sometimes have disagreements with the county on when they add new construction and when they don't. If you look in future years, we have a couple of years where it's going to be very high. '21 is, '21 is Edward Jones, and Monsanto is the bigger one, yeah, '21. So that's a lot of our new construction. It's not necessarily projects that are going on right now. It could be projects that happened 10 years ago, but were part of Chapter 100, and with Chapter 100, they only pay half of that new property tax, and then once that Chapter 100 is over, it's added to our new construction. In future years, unless we know of a big item like, say, like a Monsanto or an Edward Jones, we're thinking 20 million is a conservative number for us to use for new construction. So, all right. So, and then, you know, after we've looked at our, what our caps are with our CPI and new construction, and looked at our collection rate, the other big thing is the assessed valuation. If the assessed valuation grows more than our CPI, we'll actually lower the tax rates so we're not collecting more than we did the, you know, more than is legally allowed. So those are always good years for the taxpayers. And as you can see, we're finally past the 2009 numbers, which were our, kind of our low point, and that assessed valuation were, you know, we're no longer at our low points. And then just from there, kind of here's our breakout of it. I would like to point out that since our assessed valuation, our property taxes are so high, we get very low payments from the state, and you can see on there our state revenue of, it's a little over 11 million. That's 5% of our total revenues. The bulk of that is 10 million from that formula, which is, again, we're hold harmless, that kind of stays steady year to year. The other big component of that is transportation, which they have cut a lot in the last few years, but we think that's starting to stabilize. We don't really forecast growth in that area. We just hope it stays where it's at and it's not cut anymore. But we do base our formula on having enrollment growth, which we'll get to in a little bit. The other big components, I think if you look at the federal, that's just 4.7. The bulk of that is going to be our federal food payments for breakfast and lunch. It's over 2 million. And then our titles, between Title I, it's around a million, and then Title II and Title III, we get about 1.5 million altogether, and that's the bulk of our federal income. And I always like to point out lately, too, how well our earnings on investment have been doing. We went, we were at zero just a few years ago. We were actually negative one year because with the protest of property taxes, we had to pay back the interest to the taxpayers. So if you, we actually had negative interest one year. And then now we're looking at exceeding a million dollars.
I just wanted to point out that changes in VST, too.
Yeah, I was, yeah, because we have, no, it's a good point. We have two areas where we know our revenue is going to decrease. As Dr. Marty stated, the biggest area is that VST. So you can see that it's under the local, it's the second line down. We're looking at, I think it's about a $1.7 million drop between now and 2023. So that's, you know, every year, and we've got those years where our property taxes really can't grow that much because of reassessments. So if you look at 2021, you have that thing, we have the problem with the VST decreasing. It's a reassessment year, and there was a House bill, sorry, I wrote this down, that lowered, 769, that lowered the financial institution tax by 30%. That's 1.5 million to the district. So that, you see that year, there's a very small growth we're forecasting of .1, .16% because we're looking at that loss in the financial institution tax, along with the gradual decrease in the VST. But, you know, VST has always been around 3% of our revenue, and by 2023, it's going to be around 2% or less with that just constantly declining. So we do have areas where our revenues are growing, but we also have these threats where they're going down. So, say anything else. And so from there, now that we have our revenue of, you know, 240, around 245 next year with it slowly growing, we kind of base our expenditures from there, and I'll let Patty go into the detail on that.
So as Brian said, once we have the revenue amount, we know with our targeted 0.25% fund balance growth, we then surmise what our total expenditure number can be. We have many components that make up that total expenditure number. We have our program budgets, we have our building budgets, and then, of course, our largest pieces is our salaries and our benefits. So our salaries and benefits make up about 86% of our total operating budget. Then we have our purchase services, which includes such things as our Kelly Ed for our substitute teachers. We also have supplies of about 7.44% in student activity. So of our program and building budgets, they essentially make up about 14% of our total budget. So the numbers that then become very important for us to look at is our staffing numbers. So, and what drives our certified staffing, but our enrollment trends. So here's our long-term enrollment trends, but if we look at just the snapshot of what we are current, or what we were last year, what we are currently, and then what we're forecasted, you can see that over the next five years, we actually have a forecasted growth of 99 students in total, which is not a huge impact, but we know from year to year, our staffing needs change as well. So it may be staffing increases or decreases in a particular building. So in order to properly forecast that, currently, we're projecting a zero staffing need. Staffing increase need, however, Amy Joyce and Phil Rose Guskey meet with each of the principals during the month of January, and they assess their true needs. And from there, we know whether or not we're going to potentially need some FTE budgeted in. So one of the reasons that we look at that is we wait to make our salary increases until we know essentially how many FTE we need to budget in there. The other things that we do know is we are adding an early childhood classroom at Ren Hollow. So we know that we will be adding in one FTE for a preschool teacher and one FTE for a TA supporting that classroom. And we also know on the horizon, so not for next year, but the following year, we'll have personalized learning coming on board, and we'll also have the McKelvey Primary Elementary School opening. So with that, we may need staffing needs that include another administrator, potentially additional in special area teachers, so music, art, PE, and music. When we look at what our salary agreements are under contract, we know that we have a teacher agreement in place, that this year they had 3.23% increase, next year 2.99%. Future years, of course, will be determined on negotiations next year. Our nurse contract, currently, they had a 1.8% increase this year. We've made an agreement that their increase for next year will be at least 2.8%, so we're still going to be in communication with them to determine that. And then last year, we entered into a three-year agreement with our CWA group, our custodians and warehouse workers, and we had 3.77% increase for this year, 2.56% for next year, and 2.76% for the following year. Our support staff and administrators, this year was a 3%. So once we know how many FTE, if we need to add additional positions or not, then we'll be able to determine what our salary increase could be for those two units as well. So as our budget managers are putting together their zero-based budgets, we still do focus on three main components, and one is our benefits and our benefit program. We had the benefit for 2019. We did not have to increase our benefit costs for our medical, vision, or dental for our employees. So our health fund was doing, performing well, so our wellness efforts were paying off. We have the opening of the clinic, et cetera, so we did have the benefit of having that. We're looking, I think it's next week, we meet with our broker to look at marketing our programs in the spring, and then we will start looking at what would that increase look like? Is it a 2% potentially for 2020 or not? So we know the first half of 1920, we will still have a 0% increase on benefits, but we'll look at what we have to put in there for that second half of an increase. We also look at fuel. So knowing that we'll purchase buses in July, what is the type of fuel? So we are adding the fueling station expansion for the CNG plant. So we do suspect that we will be purchasing at least seven new CNG buses, but we're also looking at the potential of ordering gas-fueled buses instead of diesel. Our current diesel-fueled buses have some emissions components on them that make them very expensive to repair. So looking long-term future, maybe changing over part of our fleet to a gas-fueled fleet. So we'll be forecasting cost of fuel for those components. And then, of course, energy. So tonight, you approved four new solar arrays, so 75-watt arrays on four of our buildings. So we'll have some energy savings from that. We'll also have some energy savings from some of our bond projects as they become complete. That'll be offset by our estimated increases in energy costs from Ameren, from Spire, et cetera. So we'll look at those items individually and budget those out as well. Putting all those together, we know that we have come to that solid line of where our expenditures are, so essentially moderate growth. The 1.51% was a growth for this year, next year a .75%. Why is that lower? Part of that's driven by the benefit cost because we only had a half-year benefit cost factored in there. And then in future years, about a 1.61% growth in each of those. And for salary growth, you may look at that and say, hey, that's, that's much less than a 3% growth. It's actually a 1.8% growth each year over year. And what that's made up of is our FTE projections, a salary increase between 2.8 and 3%, depending on how many FTE need to be added, and then less turnover savings. So we do have savings on an annual basis from employees that either retire or leave the district versus the people that then replace them. Usually, there's a salary savings in that. Once we put our revenues together with our expenditures, we're able to look at our projected fund balances. So as you can see, in most years, we are going to make that targeted 0.25% increase, but I do want to point out, in 2020, 2021, we do have $500,000 that if everything stays as projected, we would have to make additional cuts in order to make that 0.25% growth. That's heavily driven by, as Brian mentioned, the effects of the financial institution tax, the $1.5 million reduction. We do know that Scott Kimball, which is one of the lobbyists for Massa, is working with the legislator that actually wrote the bill in order to have some of that revised so that school districts are not impacted by that reduction. And of course, that really becomes evident in 2022, 2023, where there's a $3 million deficit in order for us to make that 0.25% fund balance growth. Now that we have a CPI that is greater, like, greater than 1%, so we're estimating that it'll be about a 2%, we actually, on reassessment years, we realize that growth. On non-reassessment years, we're not realizing that growth because of the settlement of the protested taxes, are lowering our existing value of our property. So every other year, it becomes difficult to meet that 0.25% growth. So we want to throw out an idea that in the future, we look at the potential of changing the fund balance growth policy slightly, that we have a 0.5% growth over a two-year period, instead of fixing that just in one period, just in one year, to provide some flexibility in our budgets, so that we're not yo-yoing our expenditures. So we'll look at that further as we get into that. We also know with each year, as they're settling the protested taxes, we're able to then gain the revenue from the recoupment. Recoupment is not part of any of these numbers, except for this current year budget, because we don't want to factor something in that's not a guarantee. And of course, when we put this all together, we show our operating fund balance projections. So we know that by the end of 2023, we're above, is that 21% there, 21.5%? You know, what is that perfect year that we won't have to borrow from TANs? We believe that that's going to be at a fund balance between 24 and 25%. But the question remains, would we want to stop the growth policy at that time or maybe just slow it down? Because what we always run into is the number of payrolls in the month of December, the timing of the payment from the county, and they give us no warning. It just shows up into our account. So we were very pleased on Friday that we received 29 million from the county. However, Brian didn't know that, so he borrowed 5 million more from the TANs because, of course, we needed to pay payroll. So it would be nice if they just gave us a note the night before. So we probably would still recommend that we still continue to grow that slightly in order that we have a safety net in our cash. So now, lo and behold, to summarize some of our challenges that we know on the horizon, I probably sound like a broken record when I say protested taxes, but we know that that is nothing that is going to stop anytime soon. And in fact, I believe there are more companies that are going off, going to residential customers now in order to entice them to protest their taxes. We know that one way that we can resolve it, at least in commercial properties, is if the property is requesting abatement. We could possibly write an agreement into the documents, the agreement for the abatement, that they would not be able to protest their taxes or their assessment, sorry, while under that abatement. So that's one way to move on. We still don't know the impact of Scott Trade business moving from our school district, so we haven't seen the decrease in financial institution tax yet. Of course, personalized learning coming into effect not next year, but the year following. So we may or may not have staffing implications for that. Our McKelvey Primary, so we know that we'll, most likely, will need some additional staffing, both in admin and our special area. And we have continual needs for our social and emotional support for our children as well. So we don't know what that long-term goals or changes that we need to make in order to support those students. We continually work with our students in transition to come up with transportation options, some creative ways to transport and lessen our reliance on cabs. So possibly, we'll be partnering with other districts for that transportation, or future vehicle purchases that we would be able to transport them as well. As you know, nutritional services has had the lunch increase on the board item today. Part of that is to support staffing needs, to attract, you know, one of the benefits of having an economy with very low unemployment are one of the bad things, are hard things with an economy with very low unemployment, is that it's really hard to attract some people for positions such as nutritional service workers, custodians, and our bus drivers. So that remains, and our teacher assistants as well. So those remain to be struggles, but we continue on with that. Any questions? Any feedback? Anything you want to provide us with?
I'll start it off. So real quick, I guess one of my questions is, what is a healthy fund balance? And this is probably a discussion for another time, but do we need to look at, what should our cap fund balance be? So instead of every year doing the 0.25% increase, and if we need to do that, more flexibility, you know, at what point do we want to say, okay, we've reached our healthy fund balance, we've reached our max, so now we can kind of maybe offer up some more flexibility that way perhaps, too?
Absolutely. So before we can have that discussion, though, we need to make sure that we're at a point that we have year-round cash. So this year, we still had the TANs, and we borrowed- So this year, we still had the TANs, and we borrowed 19 million? Correct. So 19 million. So at the point that we actually have no need to borrow the TANs, I believe, then we can truly look at those future years and when we can truly put that cap on, you know, what is that perfect fund balance percentage?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
If you look at the, the, if you have it, or Patty, you could put it back up, the operating fund balance projections and that famous curvy line that Mark Stockwell created, I think, before Patty?
This one? Actually, Brian Waddle created it.
So instead of looking at, I think, I think our obligation, and you remember when Chris Jacob was here, he just kept kind of pushing us, and that's why he did the policy. But look at the years where the red line is higher than the blue line. And those were years, again, the economy drove that a lot, Project Parkway, we wanted to do a lot of things, so forth. But look at 10, 11, 12, and look what happened to the fund balance quickly. Just, you know, when you spend more than, than revenue. And look at that, how that fund dropped, that fund balance dropped. So Debbie, to answer your question, which is a really good question, but the, the other question is, I would, I would say, as a board and a superintendent, we can never have a year, or at least two years in a row, but should never have a year where we spend more. And that's why you hear Patty talk about looking ahead. We know there's some challenges already next year, and then again, a couple of years. And we cannot deficit spend, because look what it does. That was, I mean, that took us from a, you know, talk about a healthy fund balance down in kind of dangerous area. And so now we've been recovering since then. So I think we have to discipline ourselves, and we have to, I heard Patty tell the principals, I guess, or Amy or Patty tell the principals today, that, I mean, as we plan for staffing next year, we got to, we got to do it, even though we want to add some areas, we got to then have a flat. So we got to steal from, not steal from some, but balance out, you know. So some schools that have more enrollment are going to get more staff, and those that don't, or operations will change. But we have to have a flat staffing because our enrollment is pretty flat.
And one way that we were able to do that this year was with Kevin Beckner and Gina Pacini and Amy Joyce working together to kind of restaff and not add any staffing, but then have the behavioral specialists be added as well. So just reducing some of the positions that we, we've always had, reduce those, and then be able to add in some others too. So it's kind of rethinking the pieces of the puzzle.
Can you touch on the Scott Trade impact, both the worst-case scenario and an okay scenario, I guess?
So I would love to, but there is so little information that we're able to obtain, details behind our financial institution tax. We don't even know the source of the funds, of where they came from, in order to forecast out, you know, by entity, where that would come from. We have asked at the state level, we've asked at the county level. It's kind of a mystery.
But as far as the financial, the legislation?
That's House Bill 769, and that hit all financial institutions. So that was a, and essentially, it was a 30% reduction in financial institution tax that was going to match the tax reform, you know, for corporations.
And we were hit harder than anybody else, primarily because of Edward Jones and Scott Trade. So I mean, we were really...
And the other banks that are located in our, our district.
So that's why we're trying to use our lobbyist, Scott and others, to really go back to the legislation, legislator, legislature to try to change that. That doesn't, that's a tough impact for us.
No, I just continue to be impressed by the work that you guys do, so, bravo.
Thank you.
I just want to, I just want to, Patty said it's a puzzle, and I just want to sing her and Brian praises, praises and her department, because it really is a puzzle. You know, we want to do things, and I, you know, we, we want to do things in personalized learning, we want to do things with social, emotional learning, but it's a puzzle how we do that. And so we have to look in, in the whole organization, and the work with energy, the work with sustainability, all that really allows us then to spend some money where we really want to on students. You heard him talk tonight about, you know, things we want to do in reading. And last year, we, we've made some sacrifices in reading to do the social, emotional, behavioral specialists, but we can't, we don't, we're not going to certainly do that every year. So I mean, we, it's really is an amazing puzzle, and Patty and, and Brian provide good guidance. And I also will say that it's really important that, you know, Patty sits at the table of SAT meetings, and she hears all the work that we're doing, instruction, and she understands that and tries to make it work. I've, I've worked with CFOs and business managers that sometimes will push back and say, we can't do that. But Patty knows that those things are important, and she's, she's a child advocate just like the rest of us, so I really appreciate that and, and her department.
Where there's a will, there's a way. But we just can't add to the expenditures.
Yeah, exactly.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Next anticipated closed session will be held Wednesday, January 16th, 6:00 p.m. at Parkway Central Middle. Details of the closed session will be posted within 24 hours of the anticipated meeting. Now may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 6-0. Thank you all for your attendance tonight. Have a good evening.